This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Welcome to the Brighton Central School District Public Board Meeting, Public Board of Education Meeting, excuse me, for September 12th, 2023, and welcome to the new school year. To begin with, we will create, or we'll have the opportunity for public participation if anyone is in the audience that would like to speak. Seeing no one, we'll move forward in the agenda. Next up, we've got approval of tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Sue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, next up, and this might be a little confusing if you were at the last meeting, which all of you were, but we have up in front of us both the Code of Conduct and the Districtwide Safety Plan. We'll do them one at a time. We did talk about them, and I made a mistake last time. I thought it had to be approved at the last meeting. It actually had to sit so people would have the chance, the public would have the chance to review it. You guys obviously had a chance to go through it again. I'm going to start with the Code of Conduct. Any other comments before we put it up for approval?
You weren't alone in the mistake, by the way. I would like to take responsibility.
It's the start of the school year. You clear the cobwebs and you get rolling, right? No? Motion to approve the 2023-2024 Code of Conduct as presented at the August Board Meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Eleanor?
Second.
Seconded by Carrie Lynn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Same question for the 2023-2024 Districtwide Safety Plan. You all have had the chance to review it before, and then it was submitted again. Any additional questions or edits? Motion to approve the 2023-2024 Districtwide School Safety Plan.
So moved.
Moved by Esther.
Second.
Seconded by Sue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll approve the minutes from the August 23, 2023 Business Meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Carrie Lynn.
Second.
Seconded by Eleanor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Very exciting. We're going to do our first set of reports for the year, and we are going to hear first from Leila Chan, our new student representative. Round of applause for Leila. Welcome.
Thank you. In sports, Cross Country held their annual Dash in the Dark. The boys brought to the volleyball team on their first and second home game and are holding a fundraiser at Five Guys this Thursday. The football team also kicked off their season with a home game on Friday. As for clubs, a cappella groups have become their auditions, and the drama department has been held auditions and callbacks for the fall musical, You're in Town. The high school newspaper, Trappazoid, has begun preparations for their October issue and are planning to enforce new methods to garner more student involvement and enjoyment. As for Model U1, their chairs are continuing their preparations for their upcoming conference in the fall. Executive Council has begun homecoming preparations as well as Student Council. Exec has also begun preparations for the BHS Club Fair. In other news, the freshmen and transfer students were welcomed by link leaders at the freshman orientation at the end of August.
Excellent. Excellent first report. Thank you very much. Next up, we've got a whole series of committees and task forces that we do as Board of Education members, and it's, we're very fortunate to have Christina to be the one to sort of manage that for all of us. So I'm going to turn the paper over to her for just a second.
Okay, so I just want to thank the board because our board is really involved in the different committees of the district. We sit on over 20 committees in addition to sitting here on Tuesdays for our Board of Education meetings. We sit on all the building's diversity committees, curriculum, wellness, safety committee, many of them. And then we also serve on different boards, including in Monroe County and in New York State. So there is legislative information exchange and labor relations, and so we have representatives in all of those. And actually, this year Karen has stepped up. She's co-chair of the Legislative Committee of the Monroe County School Board Association. She also sits on the Steering Committee for the same Monroe County School Board Association, which is our regional, our county school board association. So that is amazing to have our leadership in that. So thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
And then I've been fortunate enough to volunteer as the Area Two Representative on the DEI Committee for the New York State School Board Association. So that has been really an honor to do that. So I'm really happy to do that, too. And I just wanted to start with that.
Thank you very much. Labor Relations is first. That first meeting is next Wednesday, so we'll kick off, and there's going to be updates with regards to health plans and the area of sort of health plans and what different school districts are doing in those. And we'll see updates on, there's going to be some updates in regards to new plans for mental health issues and some other things like that. So looking forward to that one next Wednesday. Information Exchange.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Yep.
Okay. And Legislative.
Legislative has already met. We are the first Wednesdays of the month, so the first day of school. We had our initial meeting where we talked about our legislative priorities. You'll be unsurprised to learn that they remain funding, foundation aid, and what the formula will look like in the future. We're talking a lot about universal school lunch and hoping that we can pass that both in New York State with federal assistance. Those are, those are the two big pieces. And then the other pieces, the other piece that schools really have to think about is the move to have New York State convert its bus fleets across the state to electric buses. So from a legislative person, that's, we have a lot of talking to do with our legislators about how much funding we'll need to be able to accomplish that and how much the industry still needs to evolve in order to be able to supply more than 10,000 buses in New York State at zero emissions. So there's a lot of work to be done there. As a legislative co-chair, it's been interesting. I was able to meet with both Jeremy Cooney and with Joe Morelli along with Amy Thomas, the Executive Director, and my co-chair Sarah Palisio from Pittsburgh. And it's great just to touch base with our representatives to say, hey, you know, here's what we're doing in our schools. And I have to give both a great deal of credit. We haven't met with Sarah Clark yet, but Jeremy and Joe are both deeply interested in schools and their welfare. They're deeply committed to seeing public institutions in New York State be successful in supporting students in every way. So that's been, it's just been interesting to have that face time in a smaller setting rather than in larger groups like the Legislative Breakfast. So that's the work.
Thank you very much. BOSI's report, we're fortunate, as most people know, that our former Board President, Mark Kokonovich, is a representative to BOSI's. He sent along a quick update, and I will quickly read through that. Board of Ed for BOSI's elected Kim McCloskey from Pittsburgh as president and Tom Nespaka from Webster as vice president at their July reorg meeting. They also welcomed a new board member, Amy West, who's representing Honey of Falls Lima. Adopted their 2023-2024 Monroe One organizational goals, reviewed and approved their 2023-2024 Board of Ed presentation schedule. And Mark would remind us, an early calendar reminder, our board is going to be visiting the Monroe One BOSI's main campus, which is the one-off Baird Road in Fairport, on Thursday, November 2nd at 8:15. So we'll be taking a tour. It's an absolutely fantastic facility, do great work with all sorts of different types of students, so very much looking forward to that. Other board member reports, and I'll start with Christina, we'll just sort of move down the line.
So for the New York State School Board Association, we met this summer. We have usually one in-person meeting for the DEI Committee, and then we meet on Zoom throughout the year because we come from all the areas in New York State. It was a really great discussion in light of some things happening in public education currently. So we were able to really debrief with one another and think about how we wanted to recommend different resolutions that were coming to the state as, you know, as the New York State School Board Association Committee. So that's always really inspiring to be with these people who really prioritize diversity, equity, and inclusion in, you know, as board members. And so it's always great to be around them.
Great.
I haven't had a chance yet at the start of the school year to attend any additional meetings, but I look forward to representing French Road and the Board of Education and the Diversity Committee and the Districtwide Safety Committee coming up shortly, but nothing yet to report.
Thank you.
I'll be sitting with the Twelve Corners Middle School Equity Committee as well as Curriculum Council, but none of those meetings have started yet. School-based Equity Committee for Brighton High School met over the summer, and we discussed the next steps of how to survey and to go over the extensive data from the latest panorama survey from students. And we were given all that information and discussed the next steps of what we're going to do for the following meeting.
Great.
Council Rock Equity Meeting has not yet met this year, but I'll be representing the board on that committee as well as also I'm one of three representatives through the PTSA from the board, and their first meeting is tomorrow, which there will be a report in a few minutes about that.
Thank you, Eleanor.
You're welcome.
And I'll be serving this year on the Brighton Believes Committee and potentially the Environmental Committee. So has not been to any meetings yet.
And also indirectly related, I told you, did an excellent job on the 5K, so thank you very much. I'll quickly note, actually Esther and I are on hiring practices. That first meet's in October, so we're a few weeks away from that one. Did attend the first Monroe County School Board Association Board Presidents, which is Amy Thomas, who you heard Karen refer to, and talked to a bunch of the other Monroe County School Board Association Presidents, just about what's going on there. Always informative. And did Construction Committee yesterday, just continued to really commend the buildings folks that we have, John DeValley, Rob Luce, and that, Mike Congelli, the whole team. The new playground at French Road looks absolutely fantastic. The front of the high school looks absolutely fantastic, whether you go there to see, drop kids off or go to the public market on Sundays. Just been really happy with the amount of work that is getting done. There's as much behind the wall with things happening with HVAC, which never sounds as interesting but is equally important. So great work being done by the construction folks, feeling very good about where we are from a physical facility standpoint.
We forgot about the Audit Committee.
Yes.
Our first Audit Committee meeting is October 10th. Larry, Christina, and I will represent the board there.
Correct. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. Nicole, BTA, first BT report of the year.
Yay! So always thank you for letting us share some of the things we're doing. And I know all teachers would like to thank the following: central duplicating, nurses, data registrar, clerical, main office, custodial, groundskeeping, and the summer work that we have the privilege to be a part of, the curriculum that we can learn. It makes a huge difference. And while it's kind of the HVAC, I guess, behind the scenes, that, you know, without all of that, we couldn't jump right in and do what we're doing. So some of the themes in the report are from June and over the summer, so I'll kind of clip through them. Some great pictures from the crews that are going to Asbury once a month to volunteer. There's 58 volunteers from the district, including Central Office, all four buildings. This sprung out of the Brighton Beliefs Day of Caring, which we have in March. And once a month, volunteers go and we help serve the food and then clean everything up and for the people who come and sign up and eat. So you can see there's some amazing pictures of students, staff members, families. It's really tremendous. And I asked for just a few pictures, and Katie Falter sent me all of them.
Overachiever.
Yes, yes, exactly.
They were all great.
Exactly. At French Road, they started a book study about building thinking classrooms in mathematics, and they are using that to rearrange their classrooms to think about how to teach math a little bit differently. So you can see an example of one of the classrooms. And it's a lot of wall space, a lot of opportunity for students to get up and show their thinking and edit and change it. And a big thank you to Stefan Amadeo for that. Janice Mix's health classes for grades three, four, and five. They're learning about the brain and how it relates to emotional regulation. They're going to learn and practice calming strategies. They have puppets, fidgets, glitter jars, and she really wanted to stress how much habits of mind and SEL are woven into health class. At TCMS, at the end of the school year, Dr. Justin Fay, so his students' father, came in and talked about evolution to one of the science classes. He's a computational biologist at the U of R, and the students just loved it. They learned about artificial selection as well as biological diversity. So it's always wonderful when we have parents come in and share their expertise. TCMS strong students during the summer helped with orientation for the sixth graders and any incoming seventh and eighth grade students. They went to the library, talked about library expectations, how to use it. They also led tours, helped with lockers, supported tech, and did team building sessions. So great group of student leaders. At BHS, in June, the AP Environmental Science students made digital portfolios for capstone projects, which is just amazing, looking at urban forestry and local problems of environmental justice. They learned about heat islands, how to think about improving air and water quality, and then looked at inequity within Brighton. They also had to compare and contrast two neighborhoods. They were trained in the use of two programs that are not required for this class, but Dr. Smith really wants to make sure they have exposure to. They can use this to link, they can use these portfolios to link to their resumes, share with the town, and be accessed by anyone doing research. So pretty amazing. And there were some links, so you could see two of the portfolios and the project assignment. And then also in the summer, some of the Brighton AP Art and Design students finished some of the projects that they had started during the year. So you can see there's a Makerspace mural, Athletics mural, an art room mural, foreign language mural, and ceramic planners. And again, just some wonderful creativity by the students, giving their summertime for that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As always, the pictures are appreciated, so thank you for all your work on that as well. Next up, we're going to hear from the PTSA. For this school year, our PTSA rep is actually Dr. Victoria Love. Standing in for her tonight is Mark Digory, her husband. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Yes, so I'll be sitting in as alternate for PTSA representative this evening. I have an information report from the PTSA President and the TCMS and Council Rock Primary School Building Representatives. The PTSA has started the year off strong. We held a very attended food truck rodeo in the Brighton High School Bus Loop to celebrate the first day of school. We have been selling calendars and spiritware at various school events and in the ours market. And this year, we held our first annual Brighton Belize 5K. We had over 180 participants, and despite the rain, it was a very successful event that we hope to grow in the future. We have two reports from Twelve Corners Middle School and Council Rock Primary School. For Twelve Corners Middle School, the events that were recently held were on August 29th. Locker Day was successfully held for grades seven and eight. On August 30th, the sixth grade and new students for all grades attended orientation. It was very well attended. And on September 6th, we had the first day of school. Upcoming events, tomorrow, the 13th, is the September meeting with Principal on the topic, Welcome to Middle School. Principal Danielle Edmonds will be presenting along with Mr. Jeff Green, Director of Student and Family Engagement, and Mr. Nate Merritt, Director of Health, Physical Education, and Athletics. On Thursday evening, the 14th, Curriculum Night is upcoming for parents and guardians who will follow a modified version of their child's schedule and meet with all their teachers. Thursday and Friday are Pitcher Days upcoming. We are using the same vendor as last year and anticipate it will run smoothly. On the 21st, ODE, Outdoor Education, is a Brighton tradition. This school in a different location for the day. Activities include archery, fishing, ropes courses, fire starting, cooperative challenges, and much more. Students spend their time at camp working together and building stronger connections with their classmates and teachers. This year, ODE days will not be overnight, but all-day affairs. On the 27th, there will be a club and activity fair upcoming, and students will learn all about the wonderful clubs that TCMS has to offer. Council Rock Primary School, past events, August 23rd was Urban Suburban Night, and they sent a representative to pass out Brighton gear that was donated by the Nancy Beck Fund. On 9/6, they provided treats and staff for the first day of school. Bus loop helpers escorting students to and from their classrooms on the first week of school. On September 8th, there was the meeting with the principal where they went over upcoming school year and had a great turnout with 50 people logged in. The Brighton PTSA 5K, again, we had that on September 10th, and we, they had a building chair representative on the Planning Committee, and the proceeds are going to fund programs, events, and scholarships from the PTSA. For upcoming events, from September 6th to the 15th, there's the Community Service School Supply Drive, collecting backpacks and school supplies for people in need within our community. For hospitality, they are looking to sign up parents to provide snacks for the September Faculty Meeting. On Curriculum Night, they're organizing a Child Watch for those families who find getting childcare a hardship, and they'll be seeking volunteers to join with the TAs and Brighton High School students participating in that. On Curriculum Night, they're also looking for speakers. CPRS PTSA building chairs will be speaking at Curriculum Nights to promote the PTSA. On September 18th, there's a new family reception. We're sending a representative to that. And the Art Room Chair has been communicating with Lisa so we can set up a schedule and sign up Genus for volunteers. The Cafeteria Core Danger is organizing a signup link that has been created to help with getting volunteers for the Food Fun Fridays and recycle helpers throughout September and throughout the year. For Yearbook, this is new to Council Rock Primary School. Our chairs have connected with the French Road Elementary School Yearbook Chair, and will start communicating with other teachers to help organize yearbook. And finally, for the library, a signup Genius link has been created for volunteers at the library.
September starts, and there's a thousand things going on. The BTA's very active, so Mark, thank you very much for that report. Dr. McGowan.
Thank you. So off to a great start, obviously, both of you shared so much, so I would say thank you to our families and thank you to our staff for helping us get off to such a great start. I would echo your comment, Nicole, in terms of all the things that happen behind the scenes. It's a complex organization, gets 3,600 kids here, going in as many different directions as people could imagine on a schedule with materials and to be presented with instruction and support that they need in so many different ways. And that's a gigantic Rubik's Cube that a lot of people figure out all the time. So thank you to everybody for helping us get off to a great start, including families interpreting that Rubik's Cube and working carefully and patiently with us to make sure the kids are safe and inspired and having a great experience every day. So we did get off to a great start. I just want to also mention that we are, as we continue to think about equity and our work in that DEI space, really thinking about how to make sure we're recognizing everybody and including everybody in our school, in our school community. And so something that has been done, I think, well before, we're trying to grow, which is providing people with more information and materials around the different celebrations in all parts of our community. The first piece I want to mention is not a celebration but a remembrance and conversations that the principals have had and information they provide to think carefully today about how we look back on 9/11 and remind our kids, remind our staff, and think about that moment, the importance of that moment, the tragedy of that moment for so many, and how that's impacted us. And so that was done today in our school buildings and communicated by principals at the appropriate developmental level for every school. But also, we're providing information as we head into this weekend about Rashishana and Yonka Porter's a day off the following week on Monday. This year, Rashishana flying on a weekend and not being days off, but just to make sure that we're explaining clearly and teaching clearly the importance of these moments for families in our community. And finally, we're also talking about Hispanic Heritage Month as well. It lasts from September 15th through October 15th, and we're communicating that the celebration spans one month to coincide with the anniversaries of independence in many Central and South American countries, including Belize, Chile, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Mexico, and Nicaragua. Hispanic Heritage Month officially lasts for 31 days, but the celebration of Latinx communities can and should continue all year long. We're sharing many resources to support our staff and families so they can learn more and connect with students and families around them as well, including the Midwest, Harburn Resource, Smore Hispanic Heritage Month resources from our colleagues at RE Center, who have been enormously helpful in this work, and the Latinx Kidlet Book Festival. And every month or as appropriate in these reports, I want to mention these and share publicly what we're communicating as well in our newsletters. So you'll hear that's very much the language that's going to be used and feel like this is a really good space also to be saying to our community, this is important to us, and let's find ways to continue to connect with all members of our school community. Thank you.
Next up, we have approval of two bids for the VPA program. Had a chance to review those bids. Are there any questions? Motion to approve both the bids noted in item number eight.
So moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by both Esther and Sue, so we'll call it Esther, and motion is approved. Next up, we're going to have Dr. McGowan go through the budget guidelines and the budget calendar.
That's right, September 1st budget presentation of the year. Principal didn't scare off the unsavable colleagues in Principal French Road by telling her, you know, get sick tonight for this meeting. This is the longest one also, so I apologize. No, I'm just kidding. Like to kick it off with the parameters. Every year in September, you set budget guidelines to help set the stage for process that really does all the things aside last all year. It lasts all year because we're analyzing every penny that we spend relative to what the community supported in that process, but the effectiveness of the dollar in supporting the program and the program in supporting kids to understand if that's the best place to use our resources. And understanding that helps us then plan for next year. And I like to compare these often to household budgets, the same way we think about the money we're spending hopefully in our household budget. It doesn't have the impact, we hope. Are we keeping track of the 7,000 subscriptions that we all have for $3 at a time? And is it really impacting our life, or should we be changing that? Right? We do that, but on a macro scale here in the district. These guidelines, though, do help us then think about going into the more formal part of the process, what we should be thinking about in terms of spending priorities and how to support the work for kids. I won't read them all, I'll answer you, these are all posted, but I do want to summarize that they come down to, again, looking at our operating expenses and make sure that they are appropriately funded with sustaining revenues. And what that means this year in particular, the language in green, is understanding the impact of the Foundation Aid formula and potential long-term changes. This is something Karen, and I'm so glad Karen continues to be actively involved in this conversation, but co-chairing the Committee for Neuropathy School Boards. Karen's history with the Foundation Aid conversation goes back, I won't say way back, Karen's not, you know, it's not Marv Sax at the table.
Or not that old yet, Kevin.
Love Marv, and I know he's watching, so Marv, I'd give you a shout out. But understanding the history of Foundation Aid will be really important as they go into this conversation, potentially making changes. And then thinking about the high-impact programs. And as federal funds expire, this is a problem everywhere. So right now, this is a national conversation about federal funding and what does it mean for programs that were implemented thanks to the quote-unquote COVID money, but that is disappearing, and how do you sustain those programs, especially those that have had such a significant impact? The second priority for us is to make sure we give the appropriate resources, provide appropriate resources, an effort that support the Brighton Blueprint, so our annual strategic plan, and the priorities that are developed based on feedback from the community, work internally, your leadership, and our leadership team to think about what is it we should be really focusing on the most in this school community, and how do we support those plans and those very concrete action plans that we measure every year, we reevaluate, and redesign. The priority areas, of course, as you know well, mental health and wellness, academic excellence, the student and family experience, staff support and collaborative culture, safety, and planning for the future. In interwoven in that is so much of the important work that I mentioned tonight relative to equity, but the focus that we have in the district and how do we make sure that we're really aligning our dollars to our plans and then evaluating the effectiveness of that. And then also considering the economic climate and changing needs, the parameter that you have set before and we're asking you to support again is to think about how do we prioritize resources, evaluate opportunities for optimization efficiencies, and looking at potential cost reduction. efficiencies, and looking at potential cost reduction consolidation. And this is a long way of describing our effort to always look at, are we being as efficient as we possibly can be? Again, best utilizing the dollars to support programs for kids. We want to make sure that we're also prudently planning for long-term investment in our facilities. You know, we talk about that a lot. I credit you and Lou in particular as well for his leadership in making sure we are looking at revitalizing our facilities all of the time. We talked about this earlier, but the work now done very visibly, people can see, I know a lot of people in our community noticing the work in front of the high school of this summer to redesign that area and fix the concrete that needed to be fixed. That's throughout the district. There's work that's been done. The playground that just went up at French Road. So many different improvements in so many places, but we need to continue to do that and not fall behind in that work. And finally, to make sure that we're complying with the property tax cap and understanding the long-term implication for complying with the cap on our long-term financial health as well, and what the impact, the impact of levy growth means, and just how over time that compounds, understanding that for our long-term financial planning. The calendar is very similar to what it would normally be. There's no changes to it this year. I would just ask people to mark their calendars for the annual meeting and budget vote, May 21st. I'm guessing there will be Qantas food trucks there as well. But along the way, lots of opportunities for the community to weigh in and for the board, obviously, to take a leadership role in preparing the budget that you present to the community and us to communicate a lot with you as that is built over time. Last but not least, I do want to mention to you, enrollment drives our conversation and our enrollment estimates, and some differences that we just want to make sure we point out to the community. We have overestimated now a couple of times the group of kids from kindergarten to first grade. And I want to point out, there's a reason for that. We have yet to be able to get a great handle on the trends K to one since the implementation of full-day kindergarten and following COVID. So if you think about some of the factors involved, people who decided they wanted a five-day week program and we were offering hybrid, people who wanted different things and then waited to send their kids, who otherwise would have sent their kids. And we traditionally did have a jump between kindergarten and first grade because kindergarten here was half-day. Other schools in the area were offering a full-day program, private pro-fil opportunities, and we have yet to be able to get a great consistent handle over time on what that jump would be. So the estimate for 23-24 was 304, and we actually have 257. But that's intentional in terms of being conservative in that number so that we also don't, for example, estimate 257, have 304 and have much, much larger class sizes than we would have otherwise planned for, continuing to try and prioritize small class sizes. And on the right-hand side of this graphic, you'll see the largest group moving through, 23-24 kindergartners, estimated right now to be 293 in 24-25, and how large that class will be 28-29. So we're keeping an eye, of course, on that bubble and these enrollment trends that really do make a big difference in our budgeting. If you think about that notion of just one teaching position based on a larger class and how that grows then over time, and the number of different supports that that one section of students need in terms of every one of their special areas and the other ancillary supports that go with that. So that does drive our spending quite significantly, so we keep a very careful eye on that. We just wanted to point out that that one particular group, we're still trying to figure out the best way to estimate that and also make sure we're keeping class sizes. Any questions for me on the guidelines, on those estimates or the calendar?
No, I'll just say that I'm not terribly surprised that it's still a little hit or miss in terms of trying to predict enrollment for the reasons you stated. We are one of the last school districts to add full-day K, so we don't have as much experience with it as many others. So I appreciate that if we had to be one way, I'd rather we be conservative so we were prepared, because I think that puts our teachers in the best positions as well, so.
I would point out what's interesting is if you look at the entire K-12 estimate, we are in trying to estimate 3,425 students off by 25 kids. So in terms of the magnitude of that estimate, you're correct, better to overestimate and cover under that, but it's a pretty small margin and pretty close to the actual. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Great.
Next up, we have our consent agenda. You've had a chance to review the personnel changes, the special ed report, the preschool special ed report. There's two fundraising activities, VHS Girls Swimming and Diving. It was actually for a couple of days ago. No, it's for August 28th through September 10th, I'm sorry. And upcoming, we have the opportunity to purchase some fun pasta. Who doesn't want to purchase some fun pasta? And that's available during the month of October. Questions in regards to the consent agenda? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Eleanor?
Second.
Seconded by Carolyn. All those in favor? Before we adjourn, I'll say two things. Just, we've said it a few times in a couple of the presentations, just thanks to everyone who allowed for such a great opening to the year, PTSA, our teachers, our students, our leaders in each of the schools. Just, we're off to a great start, and that's very exciting. Speaking of exciting, I'm very excited to announce on September 26th, we will be in Principal Tappens Building for our meeting as we go on our road tour. He's offered to service dinner that night and do a whole bunch of fun things, so we're very much looking forward to that. No, September 26th meeting, which is two weeks from tonight, will be at 7 o'clock at Council Rock. We started this a couple of years ago, going to each of the schools. So those dates for the other three schools are upcoming in the next few months. Very excited about this. Always great to get out in the schools, to see what's been done and do some of that stuff. So please note that we'll be in Council Rock for that meeting.
I did also want to point out, you just reminded me, we have a lot of Curriculum Nights coming up over the next couple of weeks. Next week is kindergarten, I know, first grade, sixth grade. I'm sorry, not just sixth grade. I have a sixth period.
Where's this week?
Middle School is this Thursday. Thank you. Anyways, point being, check the calendar. They're all on there accurately. I shouldn't have started rattle off because I can't read the calendar as quickly as I thought I could in front of me. Go to the Curriculum Nights. That's the point.
Specifically sixth grade.
But every one of the grade levels, and even if you've been there before, please come again. A great opportunity to connect with your teachers. We normally have great attendance at those, but it is really such a key step, and we just want to keep pointing out to families, be there. That partnership is key, and teachers do a great job of explaining, this is what's to come for the year, and forming that partnership is so important. And we also have a new family event happening on Monday, the 18th, too. And information has gone out to new families about that, the time and day, location, but they should please make sure they come and tune into that. We'll welcome our new families. Thank you.
Anything else for the good of the order? Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Esther. All those in favor? We are adjourned.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.